Okay, at this time we'll call as you mean the order. We'll call Rick Van Winkle.
Here.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Here.
Joe Borrell.
Here.
Frank Seraphino-Clingenfield.
Here.
Earl Mullins. Don.
Jean Davis.
And that being said, enough of that, I want to amend the agenda here. I have a letter from Earl Mullins. Dear Mayor, Town Council, and residents, the purpose of this resignation letter is to inform you that I will be leaving my position with New Paris Town Council effective March 7th, 2012. I'll be relocating to the Lock and Grid area in the near future. I've appreciated both being part of the Town Council and the opportunities that have been provided to me during the last several years. I want to tell you, in this town in which I have lived all my life, with a heavy heart, I must say goodbye. Thank you. I need a motion to accept Earl's resignation.
So would I.
We'll call Rick.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Jean Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. And with that being said, I've got another, I've got an appointment that I would like to do. I spoke with Mr. Nick Keifer, who's currently on the Board of Public Affairs, and he wishes to move up to the council. And with that being said, I'd like to appoint Nick Keifer to the position to fill Earl's seat.
I make a motion that we accept that Nick Keifer to the position of council?
We'll call Rick.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Jean Davis.
I abstain from that.
Also, to fulfill Nick's seat, I'm going to make a suggestion to the Board of Public Affairs, which we're out here tonight, that Kevin Smalllett, who was on council for the past eight years, would like to fulfill Nick's seat. And that'll be up to you and Steve at your next meeting.
I will bring his name up at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph. Next on the agenda is, everyone had a look at the minutes for the February meeting, is there any change or additions, if so? If not, then I'd like the motion to accept.
So would I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call Rick.
I abstain.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Joe Borrell.
I abstain.
Frank.
Yes.
Earl. Jean.
Yes.
Next, is there approval warrants and payroll time sheets? Is there any questions on payroll and time sheets? If not, I need a motion to approve it.
I motion to approve the warrants and payroll time sheets.
We'll call Rick.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Jean Davis.
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to approve transfer of police revenue from the General Fund to Police Fund.
So would I.
Sir.
We'll call Rick.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to approve the tweaks fund monthly operating transfer fund. Can't talk.
Sir.
We'll call Rick.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Jean Davis. I need a motion to approve February interest transfer.
So would I.
We'll call Rick.
Yes.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Ralph Douglas. Ralph, if you could come forward, please, to the podium. That way we have record of you being here and what you've got to say, how's that?
No comment.
Mayor, Village Council, we hear so much about the New Paris Police Department lately. However, you need to be involved with them, they really appreciate the job they do. They don't just sit and run radar to catch speeders, or they do what police do, they keep law and order and protect the people of New Paris. I'm here tonight representing the trustees of the Northwest Fire and Ambulance District and its members to thank the New Paris Police Department for all assistance they gave us at fires, automobile wrecks, and medical emergencies. When 911 is called from the Preble County Sheriff's Office for Emergency Response in the village of New Paris, we consider the police department as part of our team because they are usually the first responders on many calls that may require their assistance. Last year, we had 510 emergency medical runs and 120 fire runs. Many times, the New Paris Police have assisted us with traffic control, taking control of unawed persons, a drunk or a drug impaired person, of which we're not trained to do our handle even, so that we can safely perform our emergency that we were dispatched for. Our personnel are strictly instructed to maintain personal safety before administering aid to anyone. Unfortunately, time is of the essence, the quicker we can get to a fire scene, or to an automobile accident, or a medical emergency, the better the chances are that the situation of containing a fire or attending to the injured has a greater outcome. It is impossible to service a combatant person. We want to attack the fire or care for the injured, or the medical emergency of the person or persons on the scene, not add to the situation. At fire scenes, the police assist us in getting quick access, thereby blocking roads and keeping people safely at a distance while our firefighters perform their duty. At medical emergencies, the police may have to call a family member or constrain a combatant person so that we can render service. The New Paris Police have been on enough fire and emergency medical scenes that they know exactly what is needed to keep our firefighters and emergency medical technicians safe. While they perform their duties, they do it respectively and consistently. To that point, the trustees and members of the Northwest Fire and Ambulance District would like to recognize the New Paris Police Department for their dedicated assistance during fire and medical emergency with this certificate of gratitude. Again, thanks, New Paris Police, for looking out for our safety while we work in saving homes and lives in New Paris.
Thank you, Ralph.
Jean, would you come forward, please? This is only the app of the Northwest Fire and Ambulance District. This certificate of appreciation to award to New Paris Police Department in grateful recognition of your support and safety of the Northwest Fire and Ambulance District personnel during emergency situations. Thank you, Jean. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank all of you.
Thank you, Ralph. Next on the agenda is Ms. Lina Parks. Smith.
To everyone here, all you people too, we need a police department in this town. There should be no question about that. Yes, it's true that back in the 60s, we had one policeman, but everyone knew him and everyone knew their neighbors. We can't say that anymore. Our world was smaller back then, and with technology, we now have the world literally at our fingertips instead of the criminals. The prices we now pay are much higher compared to the 60s. Gas was a fraction of the cost now, but do we quit buying it? No, we pay the price and continue down the road. Nothing has stayed the same. No police department would be just as bad, well, I'm sorry. No police department would be just as bad as no street lights at night. We need more than one policeman to patrol our streets. Crime happens around the clock. Would you like to work 24/7? We need these men to shine the light of right on the wrong things that are and will be happening in this town. As long as their presence is known and seen here, people will check themselves, they will slow down if they are speeding, and they will stop doing what they're doing if it's the wrong thing to do. You know, I always thought a watchdog was a protector and kept an eye on the bad things that might happen, and would stand behind what was good. But the watchdogs in New Paris need a smack on the nose with a rolled up newspaper to bring them back to reality. I would like to personally thank the police department for all they have done and will do in the future. And once again, we need a police department, not just one man in this town. There should be no question about that.
Next on the agenda is Ms. Bonnie Hoff and Dale Hall. Consider the opening.
He came for backs for it, I guess that's it. I'm Bonnie Hoff, have a hair salon uptown, and Keith Kelly from the antique store and myself are going to chair Apple Fest this year, we're going to try to start having an Apple Fest again. Our agenda is, I guess, to ask you guys for your consent or permission that we possibly could have it in front of the antique store, up Main Street, up to at least the Methodist Church, possibly to Spring Street, if it becomes that big. Getting back into it the first year might be a little tricky, we've lost a lot of our vendors over four years and stuff, and so just getting the applications out, you know, it might be a small festival this year, and it may grow to be a bigger festival next year. Our concern was why we moved before was because we lost our electricians when they moved out of town, and it was a big money expense that Garber Electric offered us for free for years. But now, something new come into play was Lonnie, that has bought the Jamboree, an antique store, is also a teacher at JBS CTC for electrical, plumbing, and air, and they take their adult students out and do jobs for free services for their teaching. So we could end up with free electrician for this event, so hopefully that will be good. So I guess what we're here for is, we want to shoot for the same weekend that we had before, which is the weekend after Port Festival, which is September 21st, 22nd, 23rd, Friday night through a Sunday, and put up a large tent, you know, for an entertainment tent, and then just fill in with vendors up Main Street. I've already went to Chris Brower at Bud Reed's, he does not have a problem with the issue. I haven't talked to Whitey personally, but I've also talked to Pastor Pam at the church, and other than just the residents in that neighborhood, and I'd like to know if there's actually anybody handicapped there that may have a problem with parking. So other than that concern, you know, for just a two and a half day festival, basically, we're hoping to kind of draw more attention to the festival, which be invisible from, you know, the Washington Street driving by, and having a nice festival, and still running maybe a three on three basketball tournament, different things like that up at the school and stuff. But to incorporate, you know, some people getting back together, and the community getting back together, instead of all the negativity we've been getting through the paper and everything else, of starting our festival back up this year. So Dale is our new president of the chamber this year, and we've got a good group of people that everybody wants to help out and work well together. So hopefully, you know, if you guys will give us your permission or consent to do that, so we can at least block that street off from the antique, up to at least the Methodist Church, that we could do that. The only people that I think would be worried about would be more on the north side of the street, don't have the alleys behind their houses and stuff to get to, like the south side of the street, they all have the alley, so they could still park. But, you know, other towns do it every year, it's never really been a big problem. But, you know, I guess the first year, you know, if we get the consent to do that, that we can try it out and see what our problems are to maybe, you know, inhibit that from happening next year, so. Just basically come to represent the chamber, and Keith Kelly and myself, we're running the Apple Fest this year for those weekends, and hope that that can go over well, and I think Dale maybe has one other thing of chamber news that he wants to bring up to you, but...
Have you approached all the residents?
No. No, I haven't, but...
You know you're going to have someone who's going to be complaining.
Yeah, somebody's going to write, but you do that all the time, and, you know, they're going to have High and Hutton Street, and like I said, my biggest concern is maybe elderly people that live along there, to make sure that we can get to their house safely or something, or they have some other form of parking or something, so.
Well, High and Hutton, yes, but then the people that normally park on Main have to park on High and that, are you going to require or request that people come into Apple Fest parking school, or are you going to park all those places?
Well, when we had it at the school, they didn't have any parking either. They parked all along Spring Street and all the side streets, all up to that. They parked down Washington and Main and all that. So I imagine, just like any other festival, you just go to where you find a spot. But like I said, I am concerned about the residents there, so I would like to kind of maybe just go along, maybe door to door, and kind of get some idea of age of people, and if there is anybody handicapped, that we can maybe make an accessible thing at the church, or something for that, for their parking, and...
And the electrician would come into play at the school, because they supply the power to all the vendors, so you're going to require the vendors all to have generators, is that what you're going to do?
No, we're going to run electric and stuff like we did before, because DPNL will come and set a new meter, they will come and let us know where they think that's appropriate for that location. I've already got the application for that, and then we'll have to meet with them to decide where that's going to be. And then probably Lonnie will come into play then, and kind of figure out what we need, because we're not really hoping to run a lot, we mainly just want to do just that big tent, and then all of our vendors would be non-electric, basically, except for the food vendors in that tent at that end, so we can hopefully try to keep it located right in front of the antique store, and not have to run any 220s and all that stuff big up the street. We just do it kind of like, more like a street fair type of festival, and then when it gets dark, those booths close up, okay? And put your entertainment tent, and that would be something maybe we could run later into the evening. So that's kind of our intent. Like now, right now, we haven't really even had a meeting with our committees or nothing, because I want to make sure they have the date down, we have your permission to block off that street, before I got everybody on board to exactly what we were going to do. And then, of course, you know, DPNL will come into play, and then Lonnie, and then to see with the electrical. And then if we can only have, like, say, four 220s, that's all we'll get. You know, the four food vendors that have 220, and the rest will be no electric, or they'll have their own generator. So the first year, it's going to be kind of like a play it as you go. And luckily for us, we were getting ready to sell kind of the stuff that we had before anyway, up at the bus farm, because it's just sitting there going to waste. Because initially, we wanted to have it out at Ron Wester's at the Tubing Hill. He was going to put poles up permanently, we were going to set that, but the location he's offered us stays really wet all the time over by the old dump road down in that end, and DPNL and our electrician couldn't get together quick enough this year to kind of get that done. And then we thought, well, what if we spend all that money out there, and then the festival don't end up panning out the first year? Everybody's went somewhere else, and we only have 10 vendors come. You know, we might spend $15,000 out there putting electric in, and then never use it again. So that's why we kind of thought we just started on a smaller level in town, and see if it grows from there, and, you know, if it grows until we have to go clear back up into the school, you know, for that, you know, get Don McBride's, what was that his name? McMahon's permission, and kind of go that further too. But our main thing is to try to get more attention toward the festival, with everybody cruising still through town, they're going to see that something's going on, and we never had that before when we was up at the school. There was a lot of people that come in even to get their hair out and said, you know, "Well, where's your festival? I thought you had an Apple Fest." And, you know, they couldn't really visibly see it from up at that location. So, and a lot of the businesses downtown that I've talked to are really looking forward to it, because it will bring more attention to their businesses, so. That's kind of our intent, so we're hoping that you'll give us kind of your permission and consent to do that, so we can block off that street like Keith has been doing anyway for the 4th of July thing. And it didn't seem to be that that's been a problem for that. Now granted, hopefully this will be a little bit bigger than that, but, you know, we're not going to know until we get really in and see the vendors, so. So that's all I have, and I think Dale has something else in the way of chamber.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Dale Hall, we've had two students approach the chamber from IU East. They've got a project in which to get a grade, and they've offered to plant roughly 30 saplings, like oak, and maple, and poplar in our community, and we understand we can't go along the streets because of the sidewalks. We would like to plant here at the village office. We know we've got the land behind the area there. These will be saplings that are roughly about 12 to 18 inches tall, so they're not going to be big trees, it's something that's just going to take a shovel and a spade to plant, and if they're not in the right location later on, they could be moved before they grow, but we need a place, if the community's receptive, to having these students do them. Isaac Driver is a past graduate of National Trail, he is a resident here in New Paris. And the other party is Nathaniel Akers, and he's a graduate of Twin Valley South, and they've kind of teamed up together, and they're going to plant half of the trees in West Alley, and they're going to plant, if they get permission, the other trees here in New Paris. So we just need permission, I guess, to get that done, and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Counsel?
I would think that door knocking the residents down through there and seeing what kind of negativity or positivity you get on the parking before we even make a ruling on it, to save the chief and everybody else a headache there. I mean, if everybody's on board, it's a no brainer, but if half of them is against it, then, I don't know, that would be my suggestion, to try, what do you think, chief? I mean, save you a little headaches there.
I agree, you know, there's one unique thing that goes down, and that's pretty much containing the street.
Well, you go Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, but, you know, if everybody's on board, which I know Keith only goes down so far, but if it's big enough you actually go all the way down through, you're starting to get into a lot of residents, other than just business.
And some of those are rental, so that could pop, even if they get some permission now, that could change to even New Keith, I think, correct?
Yeah, but at least we have that, you know, I mean, and there's still plenty of time to give you permission to do it, once you do the door knocking, that would be my suggestion.
Thanks. Well, I've got no problem with that.
That's pretty much the same thing, I think, you know, people that live in that area, I think it'd be great to bring them back to the community.
I know we got one handicap parking, then we have two handicapped apartments on that street.
One used to be a head.
One on the east side, and one there, not too far down from the antique shop there. There's a, we got, someone requested, I know we put a handicap there a couple years ago.
Well, and they put it there for the salon, and she's closed.
Well, there was another one that was living in an apartment there, and then we put one, there was one down the street there, we had a request to be sold.
Okay, now, I'll definitely check all that, and maybe I can get back with it as quick as I can, because I can't get any forms out, and get people involved, and getting people, you know, on track if they want to do it until, you know, I know we can actually do it or not, so.
Anybody else?
I kind of agree too, they, it's going to be a little inconvenient for the people that have to move their vehicles, but it's a great event, and if they're on board, you know, as long as most of them are on board.
So I'll drive ways.
It's really not that many driveway down through there.
I think there's two, well, I mean...
Two, three, maybe?
Yeah, I think there's two or three along that street.
Still, talk to them, go down through there.
Because I think up to Danny Thomas.
I think you got less than five houses you got to contact, because like, well, actually you've got to contact all of those, I mean, you know, the south side street, like, the guys that have the...
Like you said, the alleys and have the access.
The ones on the other side is going to be the issue, I think, so.
Because there's a lot of houses there that have to be parking, except five.
Right, and some of them have two, you know, parks, like that one big white house.
And then there's a house on the corner, then you go one, two, three, four...
Well, Pat, he's got a back driveway on the corner.
Five houses down to Bob's place there, and then five, maybe six houses down to Bob there.
Now, I'll check it out, and then we'll just go from there.
Yeah, I think that way it saves everybody, I think, with headaches, kind of way, so hey, you guys, say...
Maybe if something else, maybe we can set up some parking for just residents down High and Hutton, where they could park their car, just them.
People come to town, park at the school or somewhere else.
Right, and maybe we can post that, you know, public parking is going to be, you know, at the schoolhouse or, you know, cherry, whatever.
You know, I've been talking with this McMahon, and when you do your advertising posted, that parking will be available at the schoolhouse.
Yeah, and that's just a quick jostle there.
I was talking, thinking about bringing back the car show.
Yeah, and I actually thought of a couple things about that, I haven't been able to get with Whitey, because every year he says, you know, he don't want to do anymore, he's kind of getting a grade, you want us, so we'll kind of get into that a little bit more when I get into my meetings, but until I kind of get this part, I can't get into my meetings, so. Thank you.
Now, what about the trees?
Well, my first question on that is, how much maintenance will there be required after they plant the trees?
Probably just mow it around.
Now, if you're talking about small saplings, it's going to be more than that.
Back here in the back, or...
Back here in the back, or they're going to die, they're going to go from growing back here, if they live, they live, they die, they die.
It's always wet back there.
It's a marshmallow back there.
So we need wet trees, like, maybe mobiles.
Well, it stays wet back there.
Well, I think they want to do it as a project.
But there's money out there, they'll call back there, so they're going to grow.
Right. They get them for free, and they get whatever's left over that they didn't sell from the old thing and stuff they donated, and they want to do it for a grade, so.
I have no issue with the tree back here somewhere.
Anybody else have an issue?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's your answer. Thank you, Dale. Next on the agenda is Ms. Susan Skips. Susan, floor is yours.
Good evening, how we doing? Good. Couple things I want to talk to you about this evening. The first thing that I wanted to talk with you about, and I've had a talk with the mayor about this on the phone, is that I've had a change of employment. Key Engineering closes its doors in February, and I've accepted a position with Moten Associates in Greenville. I'm basically doing the same kind of work that I did before, and I've talked to most of my clients, and most of them are going to have me to continue to do their work. Moten's been in business for 40 years as of this year, they have three engineers on staff and two surveyors on staff. They do primarily small community engineering, just like Key Engineering did. I actually worked for them for 10 years before I worked for Key Engineering, so it's kind of like going back home a little bit. So I just really wanted to tell you about that, and ask that you hopefully could place your competence in me to continue doing your work for you. And then I also wanted to kind of bring you up to speed on the East Main Street project. If you remember, you discussed this, I think, a couple months ago, in regards to the fact that you were having trouble coming up with the match money to go with the grant that you've received due to the cut in the local government funds, and then I know your 1% income tax unfortunately took a turn for the worse, which I'm sure was not good for your budget. So, in trying to save whatever we can save for you, I've had a talk with Kim Keller at the county, and after talking with the commissioners and kind of pleading your case, and the situation with the lights, and all the things that have been going on with your budget, the commissioners have agreed to allow you to keep the money without having to come up with the match. We would basically need to do primarily the same project, and my suggestion at this point, and I kind of got a little bit of a handout to kind of talk to you about with, has to do with trying to combine the project with the Washington Street project, and that was funded through a higher public works commission, and that money's in place as well. Basically, to kind of recap the projects, the Washington Street project was the final phase of the three, and it's Phase Three, and includes the area from Walnut Street down to the Legion, that area in there, the residential area for new curb and sidewalk, and then also the area from the bridge south to De Frederico down in that area. Those were the last two areas that we had left to do on Washington Street. It also includes replacement of the water line from the bridge to De Frederico, because that was one of the old water lines that wasn't replaced previously. The East Main Street improvements were basically, the project started at Washington Street and replaced the sidewalk and the curb back to High Street. And if you remember, that's kind of downtown where the antique store is, and that sidewalk down there is just terrible. There's no really other good word for it. So basically, I guess what my thinking is, in the Washington Street project, we had included a four inch water line crossing on Hutton Street, which is the one that hangs underneath the bridge that always got froze, and there were problems, and the Board of Public Affairs already went ahead and replaced that water line, I think, two years ago. You might know, you probably worked on the board at that time. That's okay, yeah. So anyway, so that part of the project, even though it was in the project, we won't be doing. So it frees up about $22,500 of project that was funded, but you're not going to do. So what I'm proposing is that by combining the East Main Street project and the Washington Street project and putting them together, we can help use part of the Washington Street project money to help fund the shortfall in the East Main Street project. With using the 22.5 and trying to kind of massage the thing to do it all together, we're still short about $18,000. There is quite a bit of contingency in the Washington Street project that I think could possibly cover the shortfall. So my suggestion at this point is, is that we bid the whole project and see where the numbers come out. If they come in over budget, basically, I've got some options there at the bottom of your sheet to kind of consider, and we wouldn't really decide this until that point in time. Option number one would be deleting the pavement on East Main Street and just providing an asphalt wedge, which means you'd go in, you'd dig out the curb, you'd repour the curb, and then you'd just put, you'd fill that back in with your granular material, and then you'd put an asphalt wedge on top, or you'd fill it back in with asphalt, but we wouldn't do any other paving on that street. We would just put the asphalt back in as a wedge next to the curb. The other idea would be stopping the improvements kind of at the alley halfway in between, there's not really an alley on the north side, but kind of on the south side, which is just past where Reed's Garage is, and not do anything after that. The sidewalk down in there really isn't terribly bad. We didn't include the sidewalk from High Street down to that one driveway on the north side anyway, because that sidewalk was in pretty good shape, and then try to get the, the cost of the project down, if you remember right, we never included that particular part anyway. So we would be taking the curb out on that side, and then the curb and sidewalk out on the other side. Another option that we can do too, to help you out, is we can do some things to decrease the construction inspection, where you guys can do some of it yourself, you know, we can do it on an as-needed basis, we can just do the water line, I think we can cut some money out of that line item anyway, because we'd be doing the two together, so if there's some things we can do to kind of cut the budget where the engineering's concerned, to help you out, to be able to move forward. So those are kind of the suggestions I have. The way we would bid the project, we would bid it in unit prices like we do all of your projects, and there's always a stipulation in all those projects that says that you can add or delete any of the items you so choose without changing the unit price. So if you bid sixty dollars a ton on asphalt, and we decide to do twenty more tons, you still have to do it for sixty dollars. Or if we do twenty less tons, you still have to do it for sixty dollars. And that's kind of how all the projects have been done, and, you know, when we've had projects where we were under budget, we added, you know, additional paving when we did Spring Street, when we did Phase Two, and the price was whatever the unit price that they bid the job originally, and we added however many tons, and that's the price that they got paid for. So basically, that would continue to be the same, we would bid the project, and then, you know, if it came in over budget, we would basically go in and say, okay, do we want to delete the pavement on East Main? We take out this many dollars because we know what the unit price is, we know what the calculations are on how many tons that would take, or do we want to take out, you know, two-hundred feet of curb, you know, so we could kind of work with the numbers at that point.
Combination of the three.
Right, combination of the three, absolutely. I mean, at that point, we could choose what we wanted to do to make it fit your budget. So basically, that's kind of what I wanted to come and talk to you about, simply because I wanted to report back to you what the county commissioners had said, and the fact that they're trying to work with you as well, knowing, you know, the situation that you're trying to deal with. You know, your council's always been very proactive and very good about trying to use the, the amount of funds that you did have to leverage lots of other funds, you've gotten million dollars of grants, monies, and used just a small amount of village funds to leverage that over the last ten years that I've worked for you. And, you know, I, I think, you know, other people in the county, the county commissioners have seen all the work that you've done down here, and how you've turned, you know, the villages' dollars into lots and lots of dollars, because you've just been so good about never giving up and being persistent and moving forward with projects, and that's, I think, you know, hats off to you, because a lot of communities just aren't that forward-thinking, and they're just not as proactive as what you've been. So I guess with that being the case, that's kind of why I wanted to come and talk to you. We don't have to have any decisions this evening, I know you may want to talk to Jane, you know, and have her kind of look at the budget as far as that goes, but I did want to, just want to report back to you what the commissioners had said, you know, that they're trying to put their best foot forward to help the village, you know, in your time of need. The only other thing I'll bring forward, which I don't know that this really matters, but the applications for CDBG are due on the thirtieth of this month, but being that we can't hardly come up with match for this project, I think it'd be pretty difficult to even try to submit an application for any more grant money when you're having a hard time trying to keep the grant money you have, so. But I did want to at least put that on the table, so that you didn't think I forgot about you, or, you know, wasn't interested in, in, you know, pursuing something like that, because you know I would be, but I also know your situation, and, and that you've got priorities that you need to try to figure out.
Thank you, Susan, and I want to thank you for everything that you've done for us, and I think everybody here knows you, is in agreement, we'd like to keep you around.
Yes, help the village.
Anything that we can do, I'd like to stay with you.
Well, thank you, appreciate that.
The village owes a debt of gratitude to you and Key Engineering for your talent and your persistence, your dedication to the village, but we would not receive that many adopted grants, and help them for her and for Jane, do it all, the paperwork, these ladies deserve it. Thank you very much. One quick question.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, we do have to make the decision on this Washington Street project, but at what point, I know we could possibly go into next year with this, but reasonably, how soon do we need to really actually put the bid out here for it, actually, you know, if we decide to do this thing, we don't know yet, but.
At this point, I really don't think we can probably bid it before August, simply because we're gonna run into a situation where we've got some trees we need to take down, and as of April first, we enter into the Indiana Bat timing, where you can't cut trees between April first and September first due to the Indiana Bat. So I'm thinking we can, you know, really pretty much delay it till the end of the year, and if that would help you be able to use, you know, twelve and thirteen budget, you know, I think that might be something that we could realistically do to work with you to keep it.
Thirteen plus is gonna be worse than.
Okay, well, I was trying to help you.
It's all your time, you know, we gotta come up with something to try again to citizens, but, you know, we got that seventy thousand dollars that we're losing from small government, we just simply gotta find a way to replace that, so, there's a lot hanging on what we can come up for replacing that money, so.
To, to get the best numbers, the best bid, what would be the best time of year to bid it out?
Well, probably, obviously, right now, because this is usually the best time, but that's not gonna work for you. I think the, the key's gonna be if we try to bid it in the fall, that that would, that wouldn't be detrimental, as long as we give them till June of next, of June of two thirty, two thousand thirteen to finish it. The reason I say that is, is we're probably not gonna be able to get the pavement in. That's not a bad thing, if we're replacing a water line and we have to drive over a water trench all winter, that's really a good thing, because it helps compact that trench to the point that by the time we would actually pave it come next June, because the asphalt plants don't reopen until about May fifteenth, then it would have gotten, you know, lots of, lots of driving over it, which would have compacted the trench a whole lot better, so that when you put the asphalt back on it, you don't have so much of the settlement that you have sometimes when you, you know, put pavement over a trench. The longer you can drive on it, obviously, the better that you are. So I'm thinking by doing that, and we give them clear till June, they'd have such a big window that would help drive your bid down to the point that it wouldn't negatively impact your numbers, you know, because you're giving them lots of time to get it done. Does that make sense?
Excellent, thank you, Susan.
You're welcome. Any other questions that I can answer? Okay, thank you very much. I don't have them yet, and the reason I don't have them yet is because I'm actually gonna be changing my name a little bit in about two days. So after that, I will get you some. Well, thank you very much, so, um.
The honeymoon is where?
Aruba.
Was it that spot?
Aruba, yeah.
I guess that's out there, but definitely, but not much time.
No, I haven't. Never been there, and I said I'm not snorkeling, and I'm not changing my life insurance policy till I get back. So I will be out of town next week, but I'll be back on the nineteenth, and then I'll get you some information. Jane has all my contact information, so does Jeff, so, you know, if they need, you need to get ahold of me, they got my numbers and my email and all that, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
All right, sounds good, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is committee reports, safety chief.
The police department handled a hundred and twenty-two calls per service in February, we took eight reports, made three arrests, issued five citations, twelve warnings, and found one vehicle. Just want to bring a little bit of attention to the calls per service there last, or the month prior to that, we had eighty-six, so, that month, that calls for service, total jump to eighty-six more months, so a hundred and twenty-two than that, so, you can tell us, woman, I'm forgetting of the. Also on here, I have, I've received the resignation of our time officer, Justin Hall, he worked for Schoolmaker, over at Richmond, he's not been able to fulfill his duties working with us, so he has submitted his resignation, I've talked to the mayor a little bit about that, at this point, we're not going to fill that position, we're leaving, taking. Also, I've included on here information that I put in the village press on this last edition about village wing's budgets in Preble County, and also take home cars is on here as well. We've been ridiculed pretty hard here lately about both of those issues, and, so the numbers are here, they were also in the village press, you know, our budgets are lowest in the county, and our officers, the amount of officers is lowest in the county, and we cover just about as many hours as every other department in this county, so. My personal opinion is these guys should be ridiculed, they should be praised for the job they do, for how much they do it, so. Other than that, just to catch comments, we've had a lot of people come into the department within the last month, telling us what a good job we do, and that they understand why we do it. It's been overwhelming, I couldn't tell you how many people it's been over the last month, so I want to thank the people in there for what they're doing, out there, and, you know, I appreciate you guys being here and speaking up. And just another point off the wall that's come up here tonight, you know, concerns about the Apple Fest and the construction on Main Street and all that, those two sound like they're gonna get together, so we're gonna have to communicate a lot on what we're doing there, maybe it's gonna happen this year. That would be my only concern. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Chief. Great, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I have a question for you, Chief. Now, Mr. Hall is resigning, correct? Are his hours going to be absorbed by the other officers, the other part-time officers, or are we just going to be without coverage that much more?
Um, it's, it's probably gonna be half and half, some of them aren't gonna be covered, some of them are gonna be up door by the other officers. Officer Gillen has been in the army for several years, he's back home now, he is actually taking a leave, a year's leave, so he's gonna pick up a few of those hours, but I can't work him over thirty-six hours, he's gonna get into full-time status, we gotta offer him benefits, so. Some of them he's picking up, which will put part-time officers at thirty-six hours each, but it will be somewhere, we just won't have anybody out, I'll be covering it from home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any more questions for the chief? If not, building?
Nothing.
Streets, spare?
No.
Next on the agenda, the lights, and I do have our certificate from the Ohio Public Utilities Commission, certified by us as the aggregate, and this is a certificate to competitive retail electric service provider, is hereby granted to Village in New Paris, who's Officer, Principal Place of Business located in rural West Street, New Paris, Ohio, to provide government aggregation services within the state of Ohio effective February eighteenth, twenty-twelve. A certificate, certification of preventative retail electric suppliers as governed by section forty-nine oh-one of the Ohio Administrative. So, and I will let people know that, since we've known this, that we are now being used throughout the state of Ohio as a basis for other communities that are doing the same thing, up in Toledo, Cleveland, and throughout the state of Ohio, so, we're the first, and everybody else is following suit with us, according to our own system and so forth, so.
That's a good thing, but my concern is what happens after three years, we're right back where we started from.
Well, we'll worry about that then.
Maybe you want to.
Yeah, what we do is still around.
We'll do now, we'll do what we can.
But we gotta think about doing something new.
Looking into it, looks like the worst-case scenario would have happened if we hadn't followed this option back then.
Right.
So basically, the worst that can happen is we're putting this off for three years. We're putting off the worst that can happen for three years.
And we're also saving everyone in the village, running.
Right.
Three percent.
Absolutely.
Which is three hundred and, if I remember the numbers correctly, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in savings in three years.
To the whole, to each of every homeowner.
Two, that's how much.
Two eighty-five to three hundred and fifty.
How much we would have saved, if the whole village was on, and that's how much money we've been saving for three years on this new plan, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Two.
Next, finance.
Uh, the only thing I have, I might as well bring that up on finance. We do have an issue down, we're well aware of the fact that we have trees in the creek, we're well aware of the fact that we're gonna have to do something, or we are, we're gonna have a problem down through there. We've been discussing ways to get down and get them trees out, it's not gonna be an easy job. Greg Stevens, tree service, has submitted a bid to the council for fifty dollars an hour for two men down there, with the help of the street department, my street department guy Billy, and possibly cutting the path and getting the backhoe in down there. We've got to do something. Money's tight, but the fifty dollars an hour exceeds my ability to sign off on this, and I'm in the opinion of council. We're walking in again tomorrow with Greg and Billy, you know, trying to form the best plan, the cheapest possible plan, to get those trees out of there. But I even stopped and spoke with Mid East today about maybe sit the crane up on the road down there, shut the lock in the road off, and see how far they could reach out and jerk a couple, they're gonna take a look at it and get back with me, so we are aware of the problem, and we are gonna have to do something before spring rain gets here, so. I need advice from councils, the direction they would like to proceed.
Well, it seems to me like using the crane from the road ain't gonna happen, pretty good.
We won't know that until we have the comments, so.
It just doesn't seem like we can adequately deal with some of the pressure, looking at it from the engineering point of view.
Well, we're hoping that they can do that, well, we don't know the cost yet, but we're what, we're hoping that they can drag them up on the bank, and then we can cut them up along either. Right now, we're laying over depth of water that you can't stand, and six foot, seven foot deep.
It's a really.
So it's a hazard, it's a hazard for anyone getting down in there and trying to cut those trees, so it's not gonna be an easy thing.
Or getting back to them to begin with.
Or getting back to them, so it's, it's not gonna be just one and a half, and cut the tree then.
So it looks like that fifty dollars an hour plus assistance to Billy and that would be a reasonable bid.
I think it's more than.
What about the county, can the county help with something?
County will.
Or the township? Because it's not all in New Paris.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, it's all our property.
That's our property now.
Yeah, I know, they in New Paris, we gotta take care of, but it starts further out of here, where the, the trees are falling.
The trees have fallen on our property, over the creek and dented up, plus, we've got beavers down there cutting the hell out of trees everywhere.
Oh, aren't they doing a good job?
So this is gonna be an ongoing problem, unless we start taking care of the beavers, and I'm not quite sure that that's legal in the state of Ohio, I think they're gonna roll something against that.
I think you can try.
But, uh, anyway, the trees are in the creek, and we have a pretty major clog down there, and when spring rains get here, we will have issues.
What kind of funding was you, was you looking at for right now? I mean, I knew you were talking about exceeding your amount, each, each, each.
Greg has made a proposal that fifty dollars an hour not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars, hoping to do it as cheap as possible, Greg has worked for the village in taking down trees when we do the street projects. They have never overcharged us, they've always been more than fair to us, so I can't help it, he's a member of the community, he wants to help the committee, but he can't go down there and do it for free, so he's gonna try and do it the best we can, so he submitted a bid of fifty dollars an hour not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars.
Well, we need to look at.
Now, where we're gonna get the money? I don't know.
That's all right. What we need to look at too is what it's gonna cost us if something happened.
He's willing to sign off on all that.
You know, I know, I've been, I was in contact with the engineer.
Our core engineers.
And we submitted this under the FEMA several years ago, and they came in and said, yeah, we committed to this for about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, and they've taxed every homeowner on each side of the creek, all the way down through there.
And we've contacted the engineer's office, and entered our office, so the best I can tell you is go down there and cut it to, and let it float downstream, be somewhere else's problem, that's what they're telling us, so.
It's been a problem in years.
I mean, we're now, we're now, the.
We're the owners.
Engineer, we are now responsible for all bridges in Village, Preble County should take care of that too, because we have a bridge down here in town, and we don't have the money to fix it, guess what, people, the road's closed.
On High and Hutton and Spring, if they go down, that's it, it's closed, done.
They've cut us off, they're not fixing anything.
They did, they still get their money.
There, there again, this, this all goes back to, we keep telling everybody about these small government cuts that we're taking, people, this is just the beginning, I'm telling you, it's just the beginning what's coming, because the state, and the, and the state's cutting the counties, the county's cutting the little guys, it just runs all downhill. So if we have a bridge down here in town, the road's closed unless we have the money And so if we have a bridge down here in town, the road is closed unless we have the money to fix it. Other than the state highway, state coming to take care of that. But the one on Spring, the one on Hudson, the one on High. We lose a bridge, our baby.
That road be closed.
And the one on Hudson isn't too far.
And you know how many houses? Thousands of dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry. Think about it. Okay, anyway, back to this.
I would like to propose that he continue to investigate, that we extend extraordinary powers to deal with this situation since we are kind of on a time limit on this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the longer we wait, the more likely we're going to have a major problem down there.
It's entirely possible.
So, yes, I do, I would like to hear about the other options.
And without Jane being here tonight to tell us the number of what we can possibly fudge, it's kind of hard to say. I just need a direction of where the council must proceed or let whatever happens happen. Something we go to the council.
I don't see where you have much choice.
I don't either, but I still got to present it that way, so.
Absolutely.
We don't have much choice. I think we have to extend.
You know, it.
We've got to do what we've got to do.
It could come down, you know, if that's not, if that's not a possibility, we may have to go to the public and say, hey, guys, we need help down here. Bring your saws and your water, even bring, let's go down there. But I don't see that happening real well, so.
That's a major problem.
Couldn't you find somebody with all the wood and come in and cut down?
Greg's going to take the wood, but still, you know, just when you drive down New Paris Pike, when you take, when you go down New Paris Pike there, just slow down and look over at them seven trees blocking the waterway.
I blocked the road.
And he's going to take all those trees. He thinks he can get all those trees out for a very reasonable amount of money and hours. And like I say, we're, we've talked with the owners of the all seasons down there. They're going to let us enter off of their property down to the creek bed. They're working with us with the other solution. We've got a couple scenarios we're working with here, but we still, you know, the gentleman needs still to do.
What about my bill on it?
He will have to sign off on that, so.
That's all he's got to do.
And he has insurance.
Greg's insured anyway.
Yeah, I know.
So.
Can Chris use his big record and pull him out backwards or anything?
No.
Yank him out?
No.
No way? Okay.
No.
That one tree, that one tree that's leaning over's probably got thirty ton of root paint on it.
It's not going to happen.
It would seem to me that we need to resolve here that he has the power to do this up to and including the alternative.
Pretty plain and clear to me.
Yeah.
We've got to get what we've got to do. We've got to look at what it's going to cost us if we don't do it. Because if something happens, we're liable.
Yeah. We've got to do it, and the thirty-five hundred dollar bill is almost there, a hundred thousand dollars.
And we took, and we fully, he fully believes it's going to be a lot less. And that's the reason we submitted it two ways. Fifty dollars an hour up to thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes.
And that way it can be done as cheaply as possible. We get the best deal, he does the best he can do. I think it's worth it.
We need to make sure nobody's throwing anything into that creek anymore, like they did for a while.
Pretty sure nobody's dumping the big tree in there.
No, I'm not talking about top tower trees. I'm talking about furniture that was thrown in that creek the last time it flooded. That was from the flood that washed all that stuff down there. And they got hung up on the railroad down here, and now that. Tell me about it.
Okay, okay, I don't want to get off the top of it. We need to make up our mind about this.
Bottom line here, let's.
Go for it.
Let's, let's.
Make it, put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that Rick proceeds on what he's doing at a fifty dollars an hour with Greg.
And not to exceed the thirty-five.
Not to exceed the thirty-five.
And I so second.
Okay. We'll call it. Mary?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Okay. Sanitation, Mary Jane.
I have sent out a couple of letters, and it seems that the properties have been cleaned up that I sent letters to. But we also have an ordinance here, and I hope everybody's read it. This is Chris and I. This has been written by Marty Botell, the prosecutor at Eaton. And there have been some changes made. We've been working on it a while, Chris, a couple of months. And I have read over this one. This is supposed to be the final ordinance. This pertains to the criminal part of it, and we're going to use both property maintenance codes if needed. And I like this one because it's got a lot of gold to it.
Would you go ahead, would you go ahead and read that for us, please?
Yeah, I. All of it.
It's only eleven pages. Come on, Mary Jane. It's only eleven pages.
Oh, God, you guys got a copy of it. Read it.
They don't have a copy of it.
No, they don't. All right. We'll see it then.
Okay, ordinance number two thousand twelve oh four. Ordinance enacting exterior property maintenance code, the Village of New Paris of Ohio. Let it be ordained by the Council of the Village of New Paris, County, Ohio. Section one, because of the needed need to protect the value of property in the village, protect the quality of life in the village, and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Village of New Paris. This ordinance shall take full force and effect from and after its earliest date after passage. Section two, that the following shall be known as exterior property maintenance code of the Village of New Paris, Ohio. A, scope, the code is limited to the establishment of the minimum standards of the maintenance of exterior surfaces and exterior functioning units of all structures, buildings, and use within the village, including lot and yard areas within the village. No provisions of this code shall in any way, directly or indirectly, be interpreted to interfere with or to limit the right of any owner or resident to inhabit real property owner or leased by them in such manner and form as they may determine appropriate consistent with other applicable provisions of law. This code is directed to obvious and exterior visual conditions which may lead to the violation of this code within the village. B, purpose, the purpose of this code is protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the valued property in the Village of New Paris by establishing a minimum standard governing the maintenance, appearance, and exterior conditions of all premises and uses throughout the village to fix certain responsibilities and duties upon owners, residents, and managers of same to both separate and collective responsibilities and duties to authorize the established procedures of the exterior inspection of such premises and uses to fix penalties or violations of this code and to provide a process or for the repair demolition or vacation, vaca-ation, sorry. My mouth's getting dry. Of premises unfitted for human habilitation occupancy or use. This code is hereby declared to be remi-
Re-.
Re-. And essential for the public interest. And it is intended that the code be construed and interpreted to effectively rate the purposes as stated herein.
Give me go for it.
Go ahead.
Subverible.
I've got to go get.
Each chapter, section, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase, and other divisible part of this property made as code as hereby declared be severable and, and if any such chapter, section, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase, or other divisible part is declared unconstitutional or otherwise invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, invalid judgment, or decree, such unconstitutionality or invalidity shall not affect any of the remaining chapters, sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, phrases, or other divisible part of this ordinance since the same would have been enacted without the incorporation into this ordinance of such unconstitutional or invalid chapter, section, paragraph, sentence, clause, phrase, or other divisible part of activity. All premises within the corporate limits of the Village of New Paris, including every building, outbuilding, structure, lot, and yard shall comply with the provisions of this code. Compliance with this code is required whether or not such premises, including every building, outbuilding, and/or structure was constructed or repaired before or after the enactment of this code and without regard to any permits or licenses, which shall have been issued for the use or occupancy of the building premises for the destruction or repair of the building or use or for the installation or repair of equipment or facilities prior to the effective date of建造. This code establishes minimum standards for the initial and continued occupancy and use for all such structures and properties, and does not replace or modify standards otherwise established for the destruction, repair, alteration, or use of the building. Where there is mixed occupancy, residential or non-residential use, shall be regulated by and subject to the provisions of this code. Historic buildings and under a building or structure which has been designated by a governmental body that has had a historical significance may use that designation as a basis for appeal from application to the provisions of this code confluence of laws. If anywhere a provision of this code imposes a high standard, then that set forth in any other ordinance by the village or law of the state of Ohio, then the standard set forth herein shall prevail. But if a provision of this code imposes a lower standard than that imposed by any other ordinance of the village or law of the state, then the higher standard contained in any such other ordinance or law shall prevail. Definitions of the purpose of this code. Certain terms and words are hereby defined. Words used in the present tense shall include the futures. The singular number shall include the plural, and the plural shall include the singular. The word building shall include the word structure, and the word shall, it is mandatory and not directly. Deterioration means the condition or appearance of the exterior of the building or part thereof characterized by holes, breaks, rot, crumbling, cracking, peeling, rusting, or other evidence of physical decay, collect, or lack of maintenance. Exterior of the premises means those portions of the building which are exposed from the view and open space of any premises outside of any building. Final order, means that a notice of violation has been served according to this code and the persons named have failed to comply within the time allowed or that a notice of violation has been served according to this code. Garbage means animal or vegetable waste resulting from the handling, preparation, cooking, and consumption of food or devastation. Means the presence of insects, rodents, vermin, or other pests on the premises which constitute a health hazard. Nuisance means that which is defined by the statutes of the state of Ohio, ordinance thirty-seven sixty-seven forty-one. Public nuisance means a building that is damaged to the public health, welfare, and safety that is structurally unsafe, unsanitary, or not provided with adequate safe address. That constitutes a firehouse hazard, is otherwise dangerous to human life, or is otherwise no longer fit and inhabitable. Or that in relation to its existing use constitutes a hazard to the public health, welfare, or safety by reason of inactuality, maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment. Occupancy means any person living and sleeping in a dwelling unit or having an actual possession of said dwelling unit. Or any person who leases or rents a non-residential building, structure, or any portion thereof owner or maintain person, alone, enjoying, or severely with others shall have legal or equitable title to any premises with or without the accompanying actual possession thereof or shall have charge, care, or patrol as owner, or agent of the owner, or as executor, administrator, trustee, receiver, or guardian of the estate, or as a mortgage in possession. Person includes any individual corporation, association, partnership, trustee, lessing, agent, or assigning. Premises means a lot, plot, or partial land, including the buildings or structures therein. Refuse means all solid waste except body waste, including but not limited to garbage, rubbish, ashes, dead animals, industrial waste, or the accumulation of brush, broken glass, tums, and roots that presents a safety hazard which present an objectionable odor, unsanitary, or safety hazard. Rubbish means solid waste consisting of both combustible and non-combustible waste such as but not limited to paper, wrappings, tin cans, rubber, wood, glass, crockery, plastics, and similar materials. Enforcement, the enforcement of any and all provisions of this code is placed with the village zoning enforcement officer. As he or she believes may be required to carry out and effectuate all of the provisions herein. Inspection, all buildings, premises, and uses within the village are subject to exterior inspections by the village zoning enforcement officer upon complying, receiving, or obvious violation of this code is maintenance responsibility. The owner and/or manager of every structure or use within the village shall be responsible for maintaining the exterior surfaces of the same in performance with the provisions of this code. The owner and/or manager of every structure or use within the village shall be responsible for maintaining the yard area, individuals thereto, in performance with the provisions of this code. The owner and/or manager of every yard or lot within the village shall be responsible for maintaining their yard and/or lot area in performance with the provisions of this code. No owner and/or manager shall be relieved from the obligations of nor be entitled to defend any violation by reason of any contract or agreement between them and any other person. General exterior maintenance requirements, the exterior surface of all structures or uses within the village by the function or decorative shall be maintained in good repair. Any exterior part that are a feature thereof having functional use shall be capable of performing the use of which such part or feature was designed. Entire yard area extended up to and including the lot line in all directions shall be in compliance with the definitions of this ordinance. Exterior surfaces and all exterior surfaces of every structure or use within the village shall be maintained so as to resist decay or deterioration from any naturally occurring cause. All exterior surfaces shall be covered with paint, finish, or other surface coating so as to prevent such decay and deterioration. And exterior walls, segments, facing, or other distinguishable surfaces area determined by the village zoning enforcement officer to have bare, peeling, flaky, pitted, corroded, or otherwise showing deterioration will require the wall segments facing or other distinguishable surfaces area to be surface coated in its entirety. If the surface to be coated is a portion of a large structure, such surface coating shall be available in color, texture, and design with the entire structure. Hitting deteriorated or decayed. Exterior walls, doors, fortress floors, steps, railings, or parts or features thereof shall be repaired or replaced. Any damage to broken windows, screens, shutters, deteriorator, or decayed sill, sap, bullet, lintel frame, or trim thereof shall be repaired or replaced. Foundations, the foundation of every structure or use within the village shall be maintained in such condition and repair as to prevent damage to the structural integrity of the same. Roofs, gutters, downspouts, and chimneys. The roof of every structure or use within the village shall be maintained, weathered tight. All missing shingles, all other roofing materials shall be placed with materials of similar kind, nature, design, and color as the original thereof. If any roof segments or distinguishable portion thereof is determined by the village zoning enforcement officer to have missing or deteriorate shingles or other roofing material, then the roof segments or distinguishable portion thereof shall be replaced or repaired with materials of similar kind, nature, design, and color as the original thereof. Any structure or use within the village having gutters or downspouts in place shall be maintained in such a manner as to keep such gutters and/or downspouts free of exterior rust, corrosion, and grease, and so the same, the system of gutters and downspouts operates as originally designed to remove water from the roof in an efficient fashion. Such rust, corrosion, and grease may develop in the course of ordinary use of the same shall be removed, painted, or otherwise surface coated as to keep such gutters and/or downspouts free of visible rust or corrosion. Yard area maintenance, refuses. No indoor furniture, mattresses, household furnishings, rugs, appliances, dilapidated vehicles, vehicle parts, trailers, machinery, or construction equipment shall be placed or stored on any lot within the village, including on any porches or patios visible from a public roadway. Over a period in excess of ten days, said ten-day period begins on the day of written notification from the village zoning enforcement officer and may be extended as a result of extenuating circumstances if approved by the village zoning enforcement officer. Exterior property areas of all premises or uses shall be kept free of debris, objects, materials, or conditions that in the opinion of the village zoning enforcement officer create a health, accident, or fire hazard a war, or a public nuisance, or constitute a blighty or deteriorating influence on the neighborhood. All debris, objects, materials, or conditions shall be removed within ten days. Said ten-day period begins on the day of written notification from the village zoning enforcement officer and may be, I'll go a little more extended as a result of extenuating circumstances approved by the village zoning enforcement officer. The open storage and display of material equivalent incidental to a non-residential use adjacent to a residential zoning district, planned residential district, planned unit district, or visible from a public roadway shall only be permitted provided the area used for open storage and display shall be effectively screened on adjoining sides and public right of ways by means of walls or fences with a one-hundred percent opaqueness and is located behind the building line and not in a required yard. Walls or fences shall be minimal. Walls or fences shall be minimum of six feet in height without advertising thereon and shall not include changuing fences. Walls and fences may be further screened and plantings comprised of evergreen hedges six feet in height. Grass and weed control not to include ornamental grass. Surface condition, remove the noxious and excessively high grass and weeds constitute a public nuisance. It is hereby deemed that weeds or grass grown at the height of eight inches or higher upon any property within the village are a public nuisance. All laws shall be provided with grass or other appropriate ground cover as approved or landscaping materials so as to assure absorption of rain, pollen, prevent erosion and rapid runoff of surface water. Nothing in this section shall bridge the right of the village to pursue remedies for noxious weeds pursuant to the dictates of section seven thirty-one point fifty-one of the revised code. Accessory structures, all structures or uses located in the yard areas within the village such as shed, barns, garages, vents, and the lines shall be maintained in good repair in performance with other provisions of this code having regard to foundations, roofs, and exterior surfaces. Any broken, rusted, deteriorated, decayed fence, yard closure, or other device or structure located in the yard area contiguous to any structure or use within the village shall be repaired or removed. Ground surface hazards, holes, cracks, excavations, breaks, projections, and obstructions at any place on the premises which in the opinion of the village zoning enforcement officer are a hazard to persons using the premises shall not be permitted. Motor vehicles and nuisance is hereby declared to exist when a person keeps stores, places, or allows to remain any junk motor vehicle, or any automobile, or motor vehicle parts on any parcel of land, street, or outing within the corporate limits of the village of New Paris. A junk motor vehicle means a motor vehicle that meets all the following criteria: three model years over or apparently inoperable, extensively damaged, including but not limited to any of the following missing wheels, tires, engine, or transmission adopted from Ohio Revised Code five oh one point four seventy-three. Automobile and motor vehicle parts shall mean and include any portion or parts of any motor-driven vehicle is as detached from the vehicle as a whole. Infestation, all structures and the premises thereof shall be maintained free of vermin, rodents, and other pests, and free of sources of breeding, harborage, and infestation by such vermin, rodents, and other pests. Insect and rodent control, grounds, building, and structures shall be maintained free of insect and rodent harborage and infestation. Extermination methods and other measures to control insects and rodents shall conform to the requirements of the local health authorities. Those want to hear it? The grounds shall be maintained free of accumulations of the breeds which may provide rodent harborage or breeding places or supplies, mosquitoes and other pests. Storage areas shall be maintained as to prevent rodent harborage. Lumber pipe and other building materials shall be stored at least eighteen inches above the ground. Where the potential for insect or rodent infestation exists, all exterior openings in or beneath any structure shall be appropriately screened with wire mesh or other suitable materials. The growth of brush, weeds, and grass shall be controlled to prevent harborage of ticks, tigers, and other noxious insects. Grounds shall be so maintained as to prevent the growth of ragweed, poison ivy, poison oak, poison sumac, and other noxious weeds considered to be detrimental to health. Open areas shall be maintained free of heavy undergrowth of any description. Notice of violation. Where a violation of any provision of this code is found to be, to exist, the village zoning enforcement officer shall cause a written notice of such violation to be served upon the owner, manager, occupant, or other person responsible for the correction thereof. The note shall specify the violation committed and shall provide a reasonable period of time, not more than ten days, to correct or abate the violation. When the violation involves a motor vehicle, a period of ten days is considered a reasonable period of time to correct or abate the violation. The note shall state that if the violation is not correct or abated within the time allowed, the village zoning officer may cause to have a motor vehicle impounded and charge the cause thereof to the property owner. Alternatively, the zoning officer may refer violation to the prosecuting authority to pursue the appropriate criminal penalties as discussed below. Note shall be served a certified mail, return receipt requested, and by regular mail with certificate of mailing. Such mailings shall be sent to current address as recorded with the county auditor or bureau of motor vehicles, or by the hand of the chief of police, or hand of any police officer as the case may be, as the owner and the property address he asks to be the occupant, regardless of whether the certified mail received is signed for and returned, so shall be deemed constructively completed if the regular mailing does not return to the village undelivered. When the violation involves a motor vehicle, a copy of the note shall also be suspiciously affixed to the motor vehicle if the surrounding facts and circumstances make it impractical to do so. In every case where a notice of violation is served, the appropriate party and the gray spirit for compliance has expired, a failure to comply, note shall be served upon the same property and in the same manner permitted under paragraph C above. In the absence of an appeal, as provided below, the completion of the notice of violation and the execution of the failure to comply notice shall constitute a final order as to administrative proceedings. Appeal within five days of the date of receipt of notice of violation, the person may request a hearing before the Board of Sanitation by filing a written request with the village fiscal officer. The appeal shall be heard at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Sanitation, allowing at least five days notice to the party and the village zoning enforcement officer. The Board of Sanitation may sustain, modify, or dismiss in full or in part any action required to correct or abate the violation set forth in the notice. The Board shall issue an order incorporating its determinations and shall serve such order upon the appealant in a manner provided by this code. Such order shall be a final order as to these administrative proceedings. This serves upon the village fiscal officer under request or for review or toll the number of days permitted for the violation to be verified and said tolling shall continue until such times that the Board's findings are served upon the subject party. The Board of Sanitation shall consider the following as determining appropriate action to be taken to win. That any modification of the original order of the village zoning enforcement officer shall not in any material way alter the standards of this code and shall not detrimentally the health, did I say that right? Yeah. The health or safety of occupants, or the health, safety, or welfare of the occupants or owners of adjacent premises or of the immediate neighborhood, and the strict enforcement will constitute an undue and unnecessary hardship on the owner, manager, or resident by reason of compelling expenditure for repairing the premises which would substantially disproportionate any benefit to the health, safety, and welfare of the community that might be derived there from. Further appeal may proceed according to Ohio Revised Code, chapter twenty-five oh six. Misdeeds for penalty to correct or abate. It shall be unlawful for any owner, manager, occupant, or other person reasonable, responsible for the correction thereof to fail to correct or abate a violation as determined by the final order entered into upon the code. Prosecution for criminal violation of this code shall be in municipal court. Final order shall be prime patient evidence for the violation of this code. Penalty, whoever fails to comply with any fiscal, with any final order as provided therein, shall be upon conviction of the same guilty of a misdemeanor of the third degree. Upon conviction, the fine shall be not more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment for not more than sixty days or both, and in addition, the offender shall pay all costs and expenses involved in the case. Each day of such violation shall constitute a separate offense, and said violation shall commence upon expiration of the gray spirit permitted by the notice served upon the defendant by the zoning enforcement officer. The owner of any building, structure, premises, or part thereof, and any agent or other person who commits, participates, assists, in, or maintains such violation may each be found guilty of a separate offense and suffer the penalties herein provided. Nothing herein contained shall prevent the village from taking such order lawful action as is necessary to prevent or remedy any violations. Village right of abatement. In the event of a violation is not corrected or abated as required by a final order, the village of New Paris shall have the right to pursue a court order permitting New Paris to enter upon such offending property to abate the nuisance, and for that purpose shall serve upon such individual owner, manager, occupant, or other person responsible for the correction thereof, a summons to appear in the appropriate court having jurisdiction to answer to the violation stated in the final order. Bitter procedure for nonmotor vehicle nuisance. Upon receipt of the order referenced above, the village zoning enforcement officer shall cause written notice to be served on the owner, lessing, manager, or occupant of the premises to give notice that the village of New Paris may enter upon the property after five days following the court proceedings to make correction or abatement. After the passage of five days with a continued favor to abate or correct, the village zoning enforcement officer may direct the necessary machinery and labor to perform the required task, or in the alternative, may enter an agreement with the subject party for abatement of the nuisance. Should New Paris enter the premises to abate the nuisance in lieu of agreement, the cost of said abatement shall be imposed to the individual owner, manager, occupant, or other person responsible for the correction thereof, together with a fifteen percent surcharge to cover the village's administrative prosecution and inspection costs. You want to go for that, Rick?
Abatement procedure for motor vehicle nuisance. Full information and a final order involving motor vehicle nuisance as being complied with, a police officer at the direction of the zoning enforcement officer is authorized to remove or direct the removal of the motor vehicle from the purpose of impounding the motor vehicle. In the alternative that the zoning officer, enforcement officer may pursue criminal charges for violation pursuant to the directive of this code. Whenever a police officer impounds a motor vehicle as authorized hearing, the officer knows or is able to assert from the registration record of the vehicle the name, address of the owner thereof, the officer shall in a timely manner give or cause to be given notice in written to the owner, in writing, excuse me, to the owner of the fact of such empowerment and reason thereof, and in place to which the vehicle had been removed. Fees for the service and return. Police, the chief of police, or any police officer may make service and return of the notice provided for in this ordinance and shall be allowed the same fees as provided for service and return of summons in civil cases. Certification to county auditor. If the bill or for abatement or correction is not paid within thirty days after submission, the village financial officer at the direction of the legislative authority of the village of New Paris shall certify the cost of abatement, including administration, prosecution, and extension caused to the Preble County auditor for placement of a tax duplicate to be collected for other taxes from return to village as per this ordinance, and a lien shall be assessed upon the property from the date of certification. Section three, any portion or portions of ordinance or resolutions herefor approved by the village of New Paris which are in conflict or inconsistencies with any provision of exterior property code, exterior property code, maintenance code adopted in section one hereof or hereby repealed as of the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. So this is the first reading?
First reading, and there is a correction. Where it keeps saying the zoning enforcement officer, village is a zoning officer.
Sanitation.
I'm the sanitation enforcement officer.
That needs to be checked.
Yeah. Unless you want to put both of us on there, there might be something that pertains to village that. Would you, whatever?
Sanitation.
I don't know. Some of this might pertain to village.
Anyway, that's the first reading, and we need to look at, so I think we'll take this up at our next meeting for the second meeting.
Because most of this is what I do.
And I know we need to send this all to our attorney. I know you wanted to put this over too. So that'll give them a chance to do stuff.
Yeah.
Any comments from anybody else there? Okay. Next on the agenda then would be planning. We have nothing at this time. Board of Public Affairs, do you have anything, Ralph?
I don't have anything. Only two folks have anything for us.
Not, not at this time. Thank you, sir. Resolution to ordinance, the Ohio Basic Code, which is a code that we have to adopt every These are the laws for the police department's way of house, too. We have to adopt this, well, while I'm breathing, an ordinance proven, adopting and acting American legal publishing to Ohio Basic Code twenty-two edition as the code of ordinances for the municipality of Ohio and declare emergency.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance two thousand twelve dash oh three.
Shall move. Is that called?
Second.
Okay. No call, Rick?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance two thousand twelve dash oh three and pass it as an emergency.
Way to three, Rick.
And away with the three, Rick.
Second. I'm second.
Okay, Mary Jane, that is it. No call, Rick?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
So we've already done the proper maintenance code. I have nothing else. The next meeting will be April the second, twenty-twelve, at seventeen. If there's no, do you have something?
Just before, when I sent out letters, I always sent one to the whoever's written and the property owner, and made a file for the village. I no longer have, the letters only go to the property owner.
Absolutely.
That's only saved me a lot of paperwork.
Okay. Like I say, the next meeting will be April second, twenty-twelve, at seven P M. If everybody is in favor of adjourning this meeting, say a aye. Thank you.
This meeting is over.
But we have a pet person, a one I've shared with him, and one is Josh's wife. Whenever anybody, if I see the letter, I have to.